Session of the 10th Council, September 7, 2021, 6:00 PM, at the Bowen Senior Center, 52 Bagley, Pontiac, Michigan, 48341. Roll call, Mr. Doyle.
Carter. Miller. Petola.
Present.
Shramsky. Taylor Burks. Waterman. Williams.
Present.
Presenting him, Cora.
Okay, um, I would like, uh, to excuse Councilwoman, uh, Miller. It's been moved and supported, any discussion? CNN, roll call.
Petola. Shramsky. Taylor Burks. Waterman. Oh.
Miller.
Okay, all right, whatever. Okay, well, I'll wait for her to take her seat, and then we'll go to amendments to the agenda. Uh, I would like to defer item number two, uh, for two weeks. Uh, the presenter, uh, was coming from Detroit, and they said, uh, they didn't want to be caught in the storm. It's been moved and supported, any discussion? I'm moving item number two for the, uh, two weeks. CNN, roll call.
Petola. Shramsky.
Yes.
Taylor Burks. Waterman. Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
And, uh, okay, I would also like to move items three, four, and five to a special, uh, cable subcommittee, uh, to go through it. It's been moved and supported, any discussion? CNN, roll call.
Shramsky.
Meeting B, because this is something that's been ongoing, so move this meeting there.
Uh, uh, we can have it, uh, next, uh, next Tuesday, at five, if you'd like.
Mr. President, I would also like to make a comment.
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, uh, these items relate to the fact that some people are still complaining about the poor quality in audio of our cable broadcasts. And, uh, this we presented before, but, uh, our pushman is 20 years old, and people just want to get the new equipment in there so we can hear our cable broadcasts. Now, uh, so these are the items related to that, and, um, if you're pushing them back again, I just want to explain to people who are coming and complaining to us they can't hear. It's because, uh, we need this equipment.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, I do want to note that if you look at some of those items in the package, those are three or four-year expenditures. They go on with contracts, so I just wanted to make that clear. Uh, if we're going to fix, uh, the audio equipment and the video equipment, uh, for a state-of-the-art studio that we need in our city, we need to make sure that it's done right. So it's been moved and supported, uh, and discussed, roll call.
Shramsky.
No, I had a question, but I don't know. Well, it's not that, I mean, I did say I wanted to ask a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman, people. Go ahead, Councilwoman, people, you have the floor.
I will, if you will let me.
You have the floor.
Who is on the subcommittee?
The cable subcommittee is not in front of me right now, but I believe it's myself, uh, Councilwoman Waterman, and, uh, there's two more people, but I don't have it in front of me.
Uh, we can't have.
Uh, Council, uh, Pro Tem Randy Carter. Uh, and then probably, uh, Councilwoman Miller, but.
Well, we can only have three people attending the meeting on the subcommittee.
All of our subcommittees are made up of three persons and, uh, and all. Thank you very much, I just, I just told you I didn't have that list in front of me. Uh, but the meeting will be scheduled for next Tuesday at 5 o'clock. I will send out an email to let everybody know who will be on the subcommittee. All right, it's been moved, and it's been seconded, it's been discussed, roll call.
Shramsky. Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Petola.
Yeah.
Now I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Supporter.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? CNN, roll call.
Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Petola.
Yes.
Shramsky.
Uh, which brings us to approval of the minutes from the August 31st, 2021 meeting. It's been moved and supported, any discussion? CNN, roll call.
Waterman. Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller. Petola.
Yeah.
Shramsky. Taylor Burks.
Uh, minutes are approved, which brings us to public comments, Pro Tem Carter.
Uh, first up is, uh, John Frank and Marie Thomas, Marie Thomas on deck. John Frank. Going once, twice, uh, Marie Thomas.
Good afternoon, Council, can you hear me?
Please speak into the mic, I, we can hear you, but speak, speak closer to the mic, or pull it down a little bit toward your face.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Councilman Mayor. I'm coming to you this afternoon asking, uh, that perhaps, before the administration changed, that we could get a, um, child playing in neighborhood sign between California and Nebraska on Highland, uh, S2 speed bumps on the street, because it's still being used as 696. At the present time, we have, uh, at least, I think it's about seven small kids on the street that's under nine years old. There's another concern, which I have voiced before, California and Highland, the intersection there. Those trees at that corner fence is all the way out in the street, and you have to pull almost into the middle of the street to be able to see if any cars are coming. Number two and three, I've been on Highland Street for over 40 years, never seen do not park signs. I am not in understanding why those signs got put up for M1, and aren't they going to stay there?
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Um, I have two announcements to make, one is on September 11, which is a Saturday, we are planning our third cleanup. And that will be attended by the Oakland University Medical Students. Um, it will start at 9:00 AM and cease at about 12:00 noon. Um, we are going to be joining District 1 and District 7 together, so it will be myself, Perry Earl, Marcus Bowman, Prince Miles, Julia Ruffin, and Sean Preston. So if anyone else would like to help us out or be a part of it, and we couldn't do this without being supervised by Mr. Robert Bass. So if anybody wants to attend or be a part of this, please call me at 248-644-2110, thank you. And I also wanted to let you know that Pontiac Little Art Theater is excited about a lineup that we have for the week of Mojer Bella. And on September 23rd, that's a Wednesday evening, we'll be showing the movie Ford vs. Ferrari, and that's starring Matt Damon and Christian Bale. On Thursday, we will have Pontiac's own, Tony Jefferson and his band. Friday night, we will have Skeeto Valdez and the Funhouse Band, uh, they typically play at the Dirty Jazz, um, Cafe in Detroit. And we are very honored to have, for the fourth time, to celebrate, uh, with us is Alexander Zonchuk. So he will be performing at Pontiac Little Art Theater as well, so if you need any more information, please go to our website, which is www.theplat.org. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Robert Bass, uh, Executive Director of, uh, Community System District Council. Uh, first, I'd like to give our prayers and condolences to the, uh, family of Mr. Frank Russell. I hate to move from that to, uh, a concern, but I have to do so. We have a number of concerns regarding the, uh, signs that were put up, the park, no parking signs. We have no information to share with the public, whether they're going to be there permanently, or whether they're temporary. And my biggest concern is who paid for those signs to go up and have there been an orderless change to, uh, affect those, uh, parking signs to be permanent? So, uh, if we could, we'd like to get somebody to give us an answer, because emails seem to do no good when I send that to the council. I got two emails that's never been answered, and it's been over a month, when they got those, when y'all have those emails. So with that, thank you very much for your time.
Pro Team President, City Council, Madam Mayor. What brings me down today is in regards to, uh, situation I've been dealing with now, going on two years, dealing with mailing. Uh, I moved off of 97 South Tasmania, my auntie's home, a little bit over a year ago, going on to, to my sister's home, 63 North Marshall Street, Pontiac, Michigan. Uh, my sister was at this home for seven to eight years, she went ahead and moved down to Atlanta, Georgia, where her, uh, one and only child, her daughter, and two, uh, small grandchildren stayed. She's down there now, bottom line is, she never came back up here to get her belongings or anything. Uh, I then went down and made a change of address, uh, I've been having still issues with not only her mail still coming to the home, but other people's mail as well. When I went down to the post office and spoke with the, uh, postmaster, I don't know what her name is, very rude, very nasty, uh, very vicious. She tried to tell me that the carriers have a certain amount of time to deliver the mail, this, that, and other, otherwise this, that, and other. Okay, well, what does that have to do with them delivering the proper mail to the proper addresses? And this is all I was trying to get her to understand, but a young lady that gave me the proper paperwork to fill out for the change of address, she had to have been new. This lady had another worker summons her to her office, and she chest ties this young lady with the door wide open in front of a nice amount of, uh, customers such as myself. Again, I dealt with her last year, I just recently went down there last week, because once again, I'm getting junk mail that should not be coming to my home. Once again, she comes out, she's very belligerent, she's very vicious, she's very abusive of her power. I don't think that's right. I'm a taxpayer, I've been here in Pontiac 49 years of my life, I have a job, I've been on my job for three years, I work very hard. Um, and now I'm in my own home now. All I'm asking is for peace, I'm tired of having to keep going down there and dealing with this woman, because it's, it's, it's to the point where I respect my elders, but at the same time, she really, really has me to that point where I'm just really just going to cut into her and let her have it, and just may end up going to jail for being belligerent. Something needs to be done, she's, like I said, she's very abusive of her power, very abusive. And you cannot explain your words detail for detail, she will not allow for that or anything, when you ask for her, her boss, to talk, she won't give you anything. Anything, I'm not trying to get anybody fired, but I have a voice, and I need to be heard, and I need to be respected. So that's all I'm saying. The postmaster down on Huron, I can't deal with her, and I cannot keep having my mail, I can have letters on my door stating, Johnson only.
That's your time, Mr. Johnson, uh, Mr. Johnson is going to take care of you from Congresswoman Lawrence's office.
Uh, for Robert Price. Just drop it on deck.
First of all, I want to say God bless this city council. Uh, Sister Peela, uh, of the city council, has always wanted to hear me speak. She, uh, likes my voice, and so I wanted to thank her for all the years of support. Also, I want to thank, uh, my dear friend and family, Doris Taylor, continues to do a great job with this city, any way she can. Uh, we're going to miss you, Kermit, when you leave, so continue to do great things. My brother is being honored. Uh, even though he is deceased, he's being honored for the life that he lived. Price Dam, at his name, Price Dam in Bud that Far, will have a plaque or concrete, um, emblem put in it to recognize, to everyone to recognize that it's Price Dam. And the ceremony is to, uh, allegedly to take place on September 28th, which is a Tuesday, which is his birthday. Um, Ron Gay of the Oakland County Historical Museum, along with some other well-known people in Pontiac, ought to be part of that ceremony. It was Ron Gay that made me fully aware that Price Dam is Price Dam, because I was trying to get the city involved in naming it Price Dam. I want to thank everyone in this city who helped my brother throughout the many years that he had public service in, as the Oakland County Commissioner, and the state representatives. Along with all the other things that my brother did for any and everybody that he could. I want to thank everybody that has helped me throughout the years also. And I wish everybody in this city to be God blessed, for everything that you do in the righteousness of the Lord. Uh, I want to special thanks Doris Taylor, because, like I said early, we family, God bless you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Council, uh, City of Pontiac residents. Um, I, uh, wanted to first, uh, mention, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I talked about the, uh, boat with DPW, I want to thank them for removing the boat, but there's some tires still left on our front street, so if we can get those, I'd appreciate it. Um, I'm here today, uh, because I got worried about, uh, the passing of Mr. Frank Russell, and it made me think about all of the living, um, individuals who have contributed greatly to the community. Um, with the passing of Mr. Russell, I was thinking, because it's too late to honor him in person now. Maybe we need to take stock of the ones that are among us, and start trying to give them their flowers while they're here. Frank Russell, for those who may not know, he was a pillar, um, in Oakland County. He worked with one of the first, uh, county execs, and he was very adamant about making sure that African Americans had an opportunity working county government. Um, he is going to be missed sorely. Um, I'm a benefactor of just being able to sit at his feet, to understand how to move, um, when issues, um, came about, um, throughout my career at Oakland County. So, um, I ask everyone to pray for his family, and also, um, for Council President, uh, his loss as well. I just want to say COVID is real, people, and we really need to take stock, thank you.
Okay, um, that brings us to item number six, resolution to approve an agreement between the city and Asphalt Specialist Inc. for $2,096,286 and 0 cents, for 2,021 local street improvement. Madam Mayor.
Is anything that people agree on in the city is that we want to get our roads fixed, so this is one of those initiatives. It's actually asphalt paving of some, uh, areas, uh, one of the streets is, uh, West Columbia, also along Woodward Avenue, and several, uh, small segments of a lot of different streets in Pontiac. Uh, so Mr. Siddiqui is here to present that, and to, uh, this is a project that will be starting, uh, with council approval, uh, this fall, and, uh, continuing through July of 2022. So we present that now for your approval, Council, Mr. Siddiqui.
Right, so this project, we bid it out, uh, it's, there's four parts to it, there's the local street, uh, rehabilitation, which is coming from the local street fund, which, uh, addresses streets such as Cherry Hill, uh, Starlight, Fairmount, Bynan, Gambrelle, uh, Omar, and, uh, Granada, and, and a couple others. Um, and then part B is the West Columbia Rehabilitation, since it's in that same area as Cherry Hill, Bynan, and Fairmount. We packaged it into one project to get better, better pricing from contractors, um, just because of the proximity to the other work. So that project will be coming out of the, that project will be funded, or that part of the project will be funded through the major street fund. Uh, and then there's Woodward Avenue pavement repair from, from roadkill two years ago, that MDOT's, uh, been requiring us to repair some damage that was done, um, to the, to new pavement that MDOT had, had placed at the rail crossing there. So that's also been packaged into this project, and then there's some small segments of repair, uh, of some city streets, uh, local streets, sorry, um, throughout the city. And that, those will also be coming from the local street fund, from the maintenance account. And so the low, the low bid was $2,096,286, it's a very, very good price, the engineer's estimate was 2.5 million, so we're actually, we, we got a very good price here.
Okay, I think Councilwoman Waterman had a question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Siddiqui, you need to turn off your mic while she's speaking, because that's what's causing the feedback.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I'm just questioning, is this a part of what we were supposed to be discussing at our finance subcommittee meeting, uh, next, uh, next Tuesday, with these funds coming out of here, and where, were these funds budgeted?
Yes, these funds were requested in the, in the budget amendment, yes.
In the budget amendment?
And they were requested in the original budget that they were cut from, yeah, so.
So we need to discuss that at our finance subcommittee.
Right.
Secondly, um, I guess I have a problem with, um, we doing this roadkill nights, and we fixed the pavement out there, and now you want to come back to us and tell us we have, need to fix something that roadkill did? So how are we going to get our funding, our money back from that, because that's a problem to me.
Right, so that money is not, um, so we're going to be paying for it upfront with the contractor, but it'll be reimbursed by the organizers of the roadkill.
And how much is that?
That's about, I believe the bid was 48,000 on that one.
Also, I guess I have a problem too, Mr. President and, and fellow colleagues, is that when we have dream crews, these people, they don't do it in Birmingham, in Bloomfield, and them do those burnouts. And now our streets look deplorable, because they have allowed burnout, so what are we going to do about our streets and these burnouts? And if this should be next year, I want the police to mandate that we don't have any burnout in our city, destroying our roads. With that, Mr. President, I'm done, uh, I relinquish myself to Councilwoman Miller.
Councilwoman Miller.
So, um, most of these streets were already selected, so I'm basically carrying the project that was already selected, but the, the selection process, um, is that we're looking at the worst streets that are, um, well, there's a lot of, a lot of streets that are bad in the city, and we just have to prioritize. And in this case, like Cherry Hill, Starlight, all, those streets, they're all close together, it's, it's, uh, it's an efficient use of the money to sort of bundle streets like that. Um, and then we do have streets in District 5, I believe, Bynan, Gambrelle, um, those are all, I believe, in District 5 as well, but, uh, you know, there's also a couple of streets in District 6, I, I, I will say that, uh, you know, proximity and, and, and just road condition and complaints and all of that, that all plays a part.
Mr. Ado, one more question, while you're up there, I, I, I just thought about it, the, uh, I believe the young lady, uh, over there, and the chair over there with the black arm, she had mentioned about the Speed Humps. We were trying to bring the Speed Humps here, but we was told from the administration that, you know, with it being wintertime, it's almost cold, so they're not going to put them down right now. That's something that I really been pushing for quite some while, way back in the spring, when we could have had Speed Humps, because I have some area in my district, they running down it like they doing 90 on side streets. We need these Speed Humps in the city of Pontiac right now, we do, because it's, it's, it's awful, and don't, I shouldn't mention MLK, it's, it's 696 now. So, Mr. Ado, will we, why can't we get the Speed Humps?
So, we had discussed having a pilot project for the Speed Humps.
Right.
Um, and I'll be sending emails around asking for, you know, candidate streets, I think we, we had mentioned three streets per district that we'll initially go with, so that will be coming your way.
Would it be a possibility of doing it, implementing it anytime soon?
It would have to be implemented in the spring, because these are the rubber cushions, and they'd get ripped up with the snow plows in the winter, so, uh, the plan is always is just to remove them over the winter, but at this point, I think if we're going to remove them over the winter anyways, we're, we're, we'll just place them initially in the spring, and see how they work out.
Okay, uh, I, I, I hear Mr. Ado, uh, but like I said, uh, I want to set on record, and, and I, I know, I know on Kettering Street, it's just a disaster, I've still there a lot. And some kids is going to get hurt one day, that's what I'm afraid of, that's why those Speed Humps need to come down. There's, you know, and, and I, I would talk with the president about this, because these officers that we got with the speeding, it's going to be for the speeding, Mr. President, I don't see them. Because people run around this city, it's like, it's, I mean, they're just running over each other, it's just out of control, it's out of control. But thank you for doing that, Mr. President.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on, I'm going to recognize all the councils, then I'll come. All of it's Pro Tem Carter, and then, uh, you have to be a handful of people.
Okay.
Pro Tem Carter, then a couple of people. I would say I appreciate having Columbia repaired. Uh, Columbia actually got bypassed when Orchard Lake was repaired, MLK was repaired, uh, we got, we, we, we got pushed to the back when Tadok was repaired, and then later on with Featherstone. So this is, this has been almost. So this is, this has been almost, almost six cycles.
Right.
To have Columbia repaired. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Pila?
Just Siddiqui, I also want to thank you for West Columbia, which I have asked for ten years. Um, based upon what I'm hearing from the residents over there as well as Cherry Hill. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And that's all. Um, I heard somebody say something about the speeding and the property. That's not got anything to do with you, Mr. Siddiqui. That does have to do with our officers and although we have given the money for three traffic officers, they have not been able to hire new traffic officers yet. And we knew that was going to happen. We will get new traffic officers after they do a little bit more hiring and they can train somebody to do this. They expect, and the captain did mention this would happen in November. So I'm not quite sure why people are asking for them in September. But thank you very much.
Anybody else from the council?
Yes, I just wanted to comment. I'm asking for them because people's lives is at stake and people are going to die. If we, if, I, I didn't interrupt you.
Wait until you get recognized.
I didn't, I didn't interrupt you. What I'm saying to you, Mr. Siddiqui, I'm, I'm addressing you. What I'm saying to you, no, I know that you're not at fault, but what I'm, I'm, I'm asking really a constituent out there, the questions. I want her to understand, if I give you some money and I tell you to go do X, I'm waiting on my money results, okay? We gave you the money. We gave the police officers the money. I want results. Somebody's going to get hurt. This is people's lives here, what they're doing. They came down and asked us for more money. We gave it to them. We want four officers for the street, three officers for patrol only, and four to go in the neighborhood. Because as you well know, the neighborhoods are off the chain with crime. It's getting really bad and we ask for that. Now, if I give them the money, we went, council gave them money, I want results. I've been waiting a couple of weeks, but I'm getting a little anxious. I'm getting a little anxious. And that's all I'm saying, Mr. Siddiqui. No, you don't have anything to do with that part, but I was just mentioning the speed humps, you do. And I just think even if you put them out for a month, that's, that's, that's good. Pull them up. Pull them up. We may not even get any snow. The way we've been had a summer, we've been had Florida weather. Who knows? We may get Florida weather all the winter long. Never know. I mean, I need to pull them up. Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have to say.
Okay, anybody else from council? Madam Mayor, before I do recognize you, um, if you could speak to um, the video of the uh Oakland County Sheriff uh helping the guy uh do donuts uh during uh this Dream Cruise weekend, I think that would be appropriate also because one of the people, uh, uh, Councilwoman uh Waterman uh mentioned uh the burnouts on the streets. And so if the sheriff's department is helping to advocate that instead of uh ticketing those people or uh retaining them, that could be a problem. Madam Mayor?
I'm not aware of any such video. I'm aware of some other incidences that I've reported to the sheriff department to have them act upon that, including uh the drag racing that was going along on the dike. Uh, the problem of um, of people driving through our uh neighborhood streets much too fast is, is very endemic. And it very much concerns me uh for the people who spoke to that. Uh, and I think that uh, council, you got to realize though, that you took out a third of the budget money for our local streets, all right? So we need that to the backs so we can repair the streets. And then if you want more money for the speed bumps, you got to put it in the budget. You know, we can't spend money that you don't put in the budget. Um, Mr. Siddiqui, I'd be willing, uh, this is endemic enough. We're hearing people complain and I am concerned uh about our children's safety. Uh, and if that's what it takes to put speed bumps down on some of the most egregious streets where this is happening and we know that, then I'd be willing to go ahead and put it down for whatever months. I don't know how long it would take to order them and put it down. You know, everything's on back order now. Uh, it's still post-COVID. But why don't we look at that? I know you had talked about a pilot program. Maybe we need to do a little bit more. Uh, and let's look at that, the council, when we come and ask for the budget, you can't then put us back to the subcommittee uh for weeks at a time and expect to get it down. So we got to work together if we want to get it done, because I too am concerned about the safety of our children in some of these neighborhoods.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, for that. Um, I think we're all in agreement uh with those sentiments. Uh, while they're doing that, if you could take care of Auburn Street, um, especially by the family dollar. Um, when Mr. Ballin was here a couple of years ago, we asked for uh some kind of flashing light or something for those people to cross the street. We have over a thousand people in, in neighborhood right there that are crossing. We've already had uh three or four uh incidents there. And once they come off that hill, um, they're just uh wiping uh little kids out. And so if that can be addressed, I think that would be awesome. Um, all right, we're going to move on to our next item, which is item number seven. Resolution to approve the city entering into agreement with amnesty air duct cleaning and installation to perform air duct cleaning services to all city buildings not to exceed uh seventy-nine thousand and sixty dollars. Is there a motion? Oh, we need to suspend the rules? Okay, we need, uh, is there a motion to suspend the rules? Has the mood been supported? Roll call on suspending the rules?
Yims?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Idola? Shremsky? Taylor Burks? Waterman? Seventy-eight.
Okay, uh, is there a motion uh to approve the city entering into agreement with amnesty air duct cleaning and installation to perform air duct cleaning and services to all city-owned buildings not to exceed seventy-nine thousand and sixty dollars?
Move.
All right, I'll take the support from Taylor Burks. Uh, any discussion?
Yes, I have a quick question for you, Mr. President.
Yes.
Because I'm kind of confused. And I think that that's up maybe clean. Was this consent of all the buildings?
Yes.
All of them, okay.
Yes, uh, yes, Councilwoman Miller. Any other discussion?
Yes. Um, I have a resident that has been coming down the last few weeks and saying that this is a waste of money. And um, I did agree with one point she made about maybe we should look in the vents first and see what's there, see what needs to be done. But I've done some more research and I do, I am in possession of emails from the head judge of the Fifty-Eighth District Court uh writing to Dan Ringo saying that there's so much dirt coming out of the vent that it is all over the ceiling and the lights and dimming it to the point where they can't see. I have that right here. I also got some of the records from Mr. Al Cooley. He did not have them all. Some of them precede his employment. Um, the basement of City Hall has never been maintained. The uh, ducts have never, ever been cleaned. We have some buildings where nobody knows the last time they've been cleaned. The only ones he was able to tell me were, I think it was this building, and it's been at least, no, I think maybe through Peterson, six years. And it's been about that long for City Hall also. And there is also an individual in the city that has severe mold allergies who cannot enter this building or City Hall. And I myself, if you've seen me up here, I'm constantly dabbing my nose. I have a severe mold allergy. And um, my resident was claiming that EPA says that you never, ever need to clean vents. Well, they're talking about normal dust. Um, we've had the roof go in at Route Peterson Center. So we don't know if any of those ducts are damaged. We don't know if there's any water sitting up there. Um, the police department has flooded several times, uh, especially this year. Uh, there, there could be mold in the ducts from that. Nobody knows. We haven't done it. And so I, I guess we could break this up and say, okay, clean all the units. Let's get some good uh M.E.R.V. filters and uh, you know, let's see if we need any repairs. But then you're going to, it's going to cost nearly as much money. It's going to cost almost as much money just to do that, even if you take the cleaning out. And this is five buildings. This is all our city-owned buildings. So I had been leaning towards no if I could find anything different. But the evidence I'm seeing is, is we don't know when we've done this. And I don't know if either Gloria or Randy would like to address anything about that, because I know Gloria has a Fifty-Eighth District Subcommittee and I know Mr. Randy Carter's been kind of looking around too. Thank you.
I'm gonna say briefly, for the people in the back, those square vents back there are fresh air in the intakes and they're black. So I don't know the last time the city cleaned them. There's no records. These three here are, are the office where, where it comes out. It's obvious they're black. They've never been cleaned. If they have been cleaned, it might have been the last century. I don't know. But this time, at least we guarantee that all the buildings will have it all clean. Thank you very much.
Yes, and if anybody wants to go look at ducts and disrepair, we have a vending machine in City Hall when you walk in uh with two holes in it and uh black ducts that everybody can go look at and wonder why we're spending this money. Um, with that, um, I will, uh, is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing now, roll call.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Idola? Shremsky? Taylor Burks? Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Seventy-eight, no names.
Okay, motion passes. Um, which brings us to item number eight. Resolution to approve support emergency opera- uh, support emergency operation plan in cooperation with the Oakland County Emergency Management and the Oakland County Emergency Management Program. Madam Mayor?
As you can well imagine, it's very important for every city and energy to have an emergency plan. And we've seen all around us, the natural and man-made disasters that have been happening, uh, such as, you know, extreme heat, uh, not plan if you need to provide cooling centers in the city, uh floods, you know, what you do to help people with that. Who's responsible? Who sends out the notices? That's what an emergency operating plan does entail. And so this is one that we have had. Uh, we approved one uh about a year and a half ago. That one is now needs to be, uh, have updates put to it and we're bringing that to you. It's required that the city have an emergency operations plan and this is the updated information of what, what we do in those conditions. So it is in your manual and uh, Mr. Siddiqui is here to answer. Any additional questions?
Right, as the mayor said, I mean, it's, it's a required uh plan, local emergencies support plan. Uh, the state requires it uh to be adopted by the council in order to be eligible for possible Section nineteen disaster funds. And so we're working with Oakland County to uh, to update that plan.
I have a big problem. And it goes over thirty years. When you call City Hall for any department, someone doesn't answer the phone. Someone doesn't receive or, or respond back to you. Right now, I have emails that are not being responded to and I'm going through, I'm looking at a list of people. The same people I'm calling. I mean, be it calling you, calling Al Cooley, the same thing. I, I, either, either you're going to answer your city number or you're going to answer the email or you're going to answer your cell phone. Uh, without that, this is all, this is all futile and useless. I can't see getting into a contract involving other people when we don't have a, a means of support of calling the city. Unable to call D.P.W., unable to call Gordon, 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 Lanning. I mean, there's no longer COVID, so there's no reason everybody should be back to work. If I call somebody, the phone should ring and should I, Maggie, get Stor and somebody should be calling me back. I mean, that's the first step we're going to do in an emergency. If we can't get past that, there's no need to involve anybody. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Uh, Councilwoman Waterman?
Is there a cost to this?
No.
Now, I, I'm just looking at the names that are on here. I agree with you, uh, Pro Tim. It's only certain departments that you can call that it's answering. Basically, that's the city clerk.
Okay, anybody else for council? Uh, my only question, Mr. Siddiqui, is in the last three emergencies we've had, there has been no council contact whatsoever to get to the residents. If there is a power outage, no emergency or whatever, I have to either go to the city website where the last uh disaster we had was the power outage. So who could go to the website if they didn't have power or to do something else? And all of our phones are now operated through voiceover IP. My question is, are we building in a hard line? Is there going to be three or four centralized things so that way the citizens can know? And the other part about it is, what's going to be added to our cable to make sure that these announcements go out to the people? Other cities, I always see Channel Four, Channel Seven or whatever on the news as soon as they have a disaster. Pontiac is never mentioned. I'm not putting anybody at fault. I'm just saying if we're going to work on an improvement plan, let's make sure that we're contacting the individuals who can get the messages out to the citizens. One of the things that you have to deal with at D.P.W. is people not moving their cars during a slow emergency. So if the city of Pontiac is not on those major sites listed in those major uh news outlets, how are we getting that done? I understand that this is just a plan for the county, but if we're going to do it and put it together, let's take the actual time to make sure that it works for all the residents. So I would be, uh, because last time we had a D.P.W. Subcommittee, you guys didn't have this planned together yet. So we weren't able to talk through it. What I would like to see is a, a real, actual plan that will work for the citizens to know what's going on. Because we had a lot of seniors that were without power, some on oxygen and other things. And we had really no way to triage or get to them without somebody just calling the old-fashioned phone tree way. And so there's got to be a better system in the city, even if we have some hard line numbers in D.P.W. or something that we're using to make sure that people can get in contact and also that we're reaching out to the major news outlets. So Pontiac is not left behind while other cities are having uh those uh actual things there. And what I would like to see, Mr. Siddiqui, and I don't know how easy this is for you to access, is what some of the other cities that are comparable size do with their emergency and if their emergency plan looks the same as ours. Uh, for example, I know Southfield does a lot of work with the county to see if their plan is similar with the way that they deal with and respond to these issues.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Siddiqui won't be able to answer that question because that's an IT question. I can answer it for you because that is something we've been working on with IT, uh, which is uh, has been installing some new modifications to our communication system. All of you now have part of the Ring Central, which is about a cloud-based phone system, changes the answering. And we also have Frank Antonis sitting right there. We have brought in uh other uh cloud-based systems that will bring Pontiac up to modern ways of communication. So we can have broad-based communication. Uh, we did have the um Pontiac Connect, the app, in which we were putting out notices to people uh through emails. So there's a lot of things that we're upgrading, uh, bringing your to attention. But the emergency operation plan is something that is required for all cities. For the county, it's responsibility of the city council to have a current emergency plan by which the city can operate. So how you upgrade your phone systems and your IT system uh is not related to this plan, council president. We are, uh, we brought this to you, um, and, and it needs to be done so that we can uh have this registered with the county. It is a responsible thing for the city to do. I do ask that you consider this and that you pass this so we can be a responsible city and have an emergency operating plan that will be effective for this city.
A responsible city knows how to operate in an emergency. If we are going to look at a plan, we cannot continue just to have the bare basic of everything. What you're telling me is we should pass this plan to go to the counties so we have the bare minimum and we're in compliance with the county. That did not address anything that I just said previously, Madam Mayor. I'm not saying that we don't need to have something on file with the county. What I'm saying is we should take this opportunity while we're looking at our emergency system to actually deal with an emergency. If you were satisfied with the last way, the last emergency we had in Pontiac and the way that it was handled across the board, then I have nothing to talk about with you on that issue. But if you believe that there was improvement, especially with the communication with the council members in this system, then we should be able to talk about that and engage and have something that can actually work for the citizens. Uh, so uh, we're going to move on to item uh, number nine, which is a resolution to approve hazard pay. Uh, so, uh, we're gonna move on to item, uh, uh, number nine, which is a resolution to approve hazard pay for DPW essential workers using the American Rescue Plan ARP.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I have a lot to say about this one. Do we need them to talk first? I don't really.
Uh, uh, uh.
I'm prepared to introduce the item, uh, as I have done for the other agenda items. I'd like to do that to give the background on this.
And then I recognize Councilwoman Waterman.
Okay. This is being brought to you, uh, it is, um, hazard pay for essential workers, uh, which was brought to a lot of cities. As we brought to your attention, our DPW department with the, uh, small number compared to the amount of acreage we have here, the amount of thirty parks, uh, they do, uh, a valiant job, uh, with maintaining the city. Uh, so, we have been losing, uh, as you say, essential workers, the city of Pontiac DPW, uh, as they go to other cities that are paying a higher salary. And many of them did pay, uh, hazard pay work, uh, increases and bonuses. And so, some of our, uh, employees are leaving to where they're paying those hazard pay, uh, for obvious reasons, you know? They're gonna go, that's, that's, that's a no-brainer. Somebody's gonna give you five thousand dollars more, they pay in Pontiac, that's where they're going. That poses a real problem for us, this is really a no-brainer. Um, and so, we have adopted a formula that we asked you, Kinsker, we've given you what that means, uh, in terms of the payout. Uh, we looked at other cities and what they were paying, uh, our finance director did do some, um, investigation to see what other cities were offering. Some of them were able to offer that through COVID money allotment. Uh, we use more of ours for our, uh, first responders, uh, when our money was. But I do ask you, is it a, it is a reimbursable ARP expense? We now have that money, and I think this is a useful way of using that. Uh, what we did was decided the base paid based on seniority. Uh, some of the workers were here throughout the period of COVID eighteen months, uh, some others weren't, you know, were later hirers. So, we, uh, had a formula that accounted for seniority as well, uh, and of course, giving the higher pay to our, um, chief, um, administrators in that department. Uh, during COVID, when a lot of people were working remotely, a lot of our different staffs, the essential workers had to come in every day. They couldn't fix the street lights remotely. They could not, uh, uh, you know, make sure that the, check out the, uh, um, the holes in the streets remotely. So, they have to go in, uh, and because of that, uh, they are essential, what we call essentials, they came in every day. They didn't get a day off, uh, for work at home, like so many others. So, this is why many cities are recognizing this. I think we should be, as you say, with the times too, uh, be able to, uh, keep our workers, reward our workers, and I think uh, both the top administrators, both Mr. Siddiqui and Al Cooley have highly recommended this. I suggested that to them, we worked out a formula that we seem to be there, uh, and altogether, this is only gonna be, this is less than fifty thousand dollars. So, um, that is, um, compared to what some other cities that have huge staffs in DPW, you know, we still have to do a lot of things. This is a miniscule amount. So, we can do this, or we can keep losing, uh, DPW workers, and if you think it's hard now to get your speed bumps and your roads repaired, it becomes even harder if you can't hire, um, responsible people. So, I do highly recommend this, holds on putting forward, uh, and it is also recommended by both of the, um, um, DPW, both engineer and deputy director.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I call on you, Councilwoman Waterman, I'm just gonna say two points, uh, really quickly. We should have been taking care of our workers at City Hall and other places when we had the COVID money to do it in the first place. I have nothing against those people, um, getting paid, um, and I also agree that our DPW workers, and I think that everybody in the city should get them a hand clap for coming in every day, even when I thought City Hall shouldn't have been there. But they weren't the only ones working at City Hall. And so, um.
I need to speak.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you, I'm, I'm about to, uh, remove myself from this meeting, Councilwoman Waterman. Um, the, the last thing I wanna say is, I will not entertain any of this until there's a list that's complete with all of the workers at City Hall to be made whole, and the formula shouldn't be based on seniority because everybody's life is worth the same, it should be based on if they worked or if they didn't work. And so, I'm gonna ask my colleagues, Pro Tim Carter, to take over, and I'm gonna, uh, lead this meeting.
Um, thank you, Mr. President, 'cause I'm gonna speak my piece, and I'm ready to go. I'm looking at this list, and this, this list is absolutely absurd to me because you have two people that are down at the bottom of this page who worked tirelessly in this city, cleaning City Hall, contacted COVID, cleaning this City Hall, and you wanna give them some peanuts? You wanna give them peanuts, and the other people who were, you got up here at the top, they weren't really in City Hall doing anything, and you wanna give them top dollar because they are the department heads and acting department heads? This is, this is, oh my God, this is just, this scandalous, this is absolutely scandalous. You also had, uh, our city clerk office who worked every day tirelessly, did an election, had people sitting there, and you don't have the audacity to put them on this list? This is sad. I will not vote for anything like this. I will, uh, agree with the president until there is a valid listing of everybody who worked in this city during COVID, code enforcement was out there working, they got cars, they should be going up and down the streets right now in those cars that we gave them, seeing what's going on. This is absolutely crazy, and I will not give anybody a dime of this money until everybody is taken care of, especially the two people at the bottom who did all the work in this City Hall, and you wanna give them pennies? That is shameless, it's absolutely shameless.
Thank you, Mr. Pro Tim. Um, I got a call today from somebody in DPW. This is not the recommended amount that they have suggested that the mayor gives them. They suggested that they not get the top dollar amount that they gotten, that the mayor be giving everybody in the city a substantial amount. We have Ms. Wesley, who is here every single day. She may not have come in at nine o'clock, she came in maybe a little bit later, but she still worked her eight hours, and if they look at payroll, they will see that. She's only getting a small amount. And then we have, um, the janitors that have been here for over ten years with us, although they only hired in to the DPW department because of the change in twenty twenty, but they have been here with us. You all know Omar and Fatima, those that come to the City Hall on a regular basis. She, she gave them peanuts, and I do mean peanuts. But this is not what the, um, department heads at DPW have asked, but this is the number that the mayor has given. Um, and she's not included, anybody in here but DPW. And code enforcement, I know Patrice had an argument about that, but I will say that there were quite a few code enforcement officers that worked out of their home. They did not work in the roads whether they had the car or not, because I have a couple of them that were assigned to District Three that I couldn't get hold of, and the excuse was, they had a family member that was home ill, and they didn't wanna bring COVID home, they were afraid of taking that. I can understand that, and maybe they shouldn't get the full care's money that everybody else is getting. However, when you start giving money, um, in total, it's a five hundred dollars, and that was one of the five hundred dollars that she's offered to one of ours in the DPW department that has spent out there every single day to help, um, to the point where they actually contracted COVID. So, it's just, I don't understand people, I don't understand when they say they care, but they still show that they care. I have a problem with that. And I think that maybe we should all hold off on a vote until we have every city employee that works for this city on this list and/or an explanation as to why they're not. But I know the dollar amount that I heard was that they should be getting in excess of a thousand dollars, in, in excess of a thousand dollars, not a thousand dollars, but more than that, because they are quite worthy of that. With that, I'm just gonna say, I'll say the same thing Patrice said, wait until everybody is on the list.
Mr. Chair?
Would everybody on the list?
Yeah, then you can speak, Mayor. I'm not gonna be easy, easier. You know, there's an old saying, you know, talk is cheap, and you don't tell me you love me, and then you don't give me anything. And that's an example of the employees, you picking and choosing who get more when we all should be. There was a lot of people, many departments worked. And just as I mentioned to you, still do, there were people that had COVID, and citizens was coming in that building, they don't know. I'm just gonna put it out there, these people put their life on the line. I also agree with Waterman, I agree with Mary, not all the Marys we know, but we, we're honest, that we need to pull this off. We need to, I don't know, uh, clerk, should we vote to take this off the agenda, because until this is a fair, this is across the board, I'm not gonna even go into detail. There's no, I'm not gonna even entertain this, this is insulting, many people tested. It's not that I like one employee more than, that's what he look like, I'm paying them more because they got a bigger job. It should have been a flat rate just across the board for everybody, and that way, it's just like you having your kids, well, I'm gonna give you more because I like you more. Well, no, 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 you don't do it like that. I'm gonna give you both the same thing, then you can't complain, you both got the same thing, everybody got the same thing. And until that is done, they need not bring that before me, that's not gonna happen. So, seeing like my colleague saying we can take that off, we can just take that off the agenda, so we don't have to entertain it next week, how do we go about that? Table it?
Uh, Madam Mayor, you have the spot?
Uh, I'm listening to what your, uh, complaints and concerns are about this offer. Uh, if it's just a matter, you want everybody to get some money, hey, I have no problem with that, let's give everybody two thousand dollars, they wouldn't, uh, would object to that. Uh, that would cost the city, I don't know, finance director would have to figure that out. But, uh, what we have here is typical to what was done in other cities, and that's why we're losing workers. Uh, and, um, this is, this is the rationale behind this. There is ARP money that's directed toward essential workers, not, uh, first responders. So, there is a logic in this, uh, we didn't just pull this out of thin air, because this is recognized as a quality of caliber people who are getting benefits because of the special work they did, uh, during COVID, uh, to keep the rest of us safety, whether others of us were, you know, able to work with, um, through Zoom. So, but if the question is, uh, let's keep everybody fair, like everybody some money, hey, I'll, I'll vote for that, tell me how much you wanna give them, okay?
Uh, Mr. Pro Tim, I, I would.
Madam Mayor, you're talking about how we're losing people constantly. Um, let me ask, maybe when they don't get their raise, which we did give some people the raise of three percent, and they haven't received it since we passed the budget in June?
Yes, they have.
No, they haven't. I sat, he, uh-uh, I sat down with an individual that works for the city folks, and we gave three percent raise, and he has not, or she, neither one has not seen their raise yet.
To several points.
So, I would like to, you know what? I would like to see, Darren, you're here, I would like to see the payrolls to show the difference between what they got in July, or no, I'm sorry, yeah, what they got in July and what they got in April. So, we can compare them, and we have the names, we're not gonna give you the names, just show us the payroll for everybody so we can verify who got a raise and who didn't, because I know, I was told when I had that conversation that there were some people that didn't get it, and I'm not gonna share the names, because you ain't gonna come back and fire them. That's it.
Uh, you, you're very correct, Mary, I know several myself, and it's a, it's a thing of picking and choosing people you don't like, so you don't give them their raises. Now, that was something that the council did as a body, they all split up those raises. There are people in the city right now afraid to say the things they raised. You just gotta tell the people the truth, it is happening. And, right, uh, I mean, to discriminate one against one worker, but me, myself, as working for my constituent, I think the residents waiting on what they're gonna get out of this care's money, we need to get that straightened out first, because we need to get busy on what the resident's gonna do. And that's why I had mentioned to you that one meeting, one building, one city, don't go from district to district, one meeting with the council, talk to the people and see what they want done with this money, from the scare's money, that is your money as well. So, uh, you know, if you, if you're gonna do that, maybe, I mean, scratch everybody and go to the people, I mean, if you're gonna do that. Because that's what really, the money is for.
Exactly. Mr. Chair, may I make one last comment?
Make the last comment.
Okay. Um, that's exactly what we are going to do, in fact, thank you, sorry? I'm sorry? Am I recognized to speak? Oh, okay, I didn't understand, I thought you would recognize me.
Uh, as of February twentieth, the lights on, street lights on, however job it is, have not been repaired. The lights on Walton have not been repaired since April twenty-one. The note says there are seven trees in Hawthorne Park and J C Park that have been in the park in three years, let alone a broken parking foot. So, the city doing any, any work, or either that, or they're told not to do any of the, any of the repairs. And that needs to show up inside a performance of whoever is supposed to be doing the jobs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So, I'm not sure how that related to the agenda item we're discussing right now, but anyway, let me just, um, I, I offered if you wanna do something fair, you called it, and give it to everybody, I have no problem with that, suggest an amount, and we can put on that agenda. Uh, there may be some people haven't gotten the three percent because, as remember, council said they were not going to be given to people who had not been hired for more than, uh, six months or a year, I've forgotten that now.
No, no, no.
May I finish, please? May I finish, please?
Because you're telling untruths.
Some of these people have been here for years.
May I finish, please?
You are telling untruths.
But as Councilwoman Miller did bring up a point in terms of taking this to the people and let them having some input, that's exactly what we're gonna do. In fact, tomorrow will be the first of the ARP town halls. Uh, it is going to be at one o'clock, it will be on Facebook Live, we have some guest panelists will be there, and we will talk about. Uh, I want citizen and community engagement in how we spend this thirty-seven point seven million dollars. So, it'll be listed, it's by Zoom, also by phone, it'll be the first of several kickoff, we have some guest panelists, and we will do a number of those town halls, so everybody in the city can be involved in giving their inputs. I'm glad you brought that up, Councilwoman Miller.
Well, the only, the only part is, you pick the part that you like the most, what I said. What I said also, that council should be aware, these Zoom meetings that you have there, your meeting. And we are elected officials for every seven district in the city, we should be, we count there, we represent our district. We know what our district want, believe it or not, I know, I know what five want. And so, how you gonna have a Zoom meeting that we are not part of, a privy of, and all, and all seniors can't watch Zoom, they don't understand it? So, that's not what, I said that, but also said that we should be involved.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, um, uh, communication with City Attorney, item number ten, has been received.
Yep.
Communication from City Clerk, item number eleven?
Um, Mr. President, Pro Tim, we received a citizen request, um, it's already been, um, mentioned by, uh, Mr. Price's brother about to locate a commemorative, um, plaque honoring Hubert Price Junior within Bodat Park. So, I don't know if you wanna refer this to the DPW department or however, but.
Somebody, somebody would notify us when it's available. Uh, Mr. Clerk, I would say the seven oh nine would be.
Uh, just a minute, Mr. President, I think this is going to be September the twenty-eighth, is that correct? September the twenty-eighth, at what time, Mr. Gay? Pardon me?
Where?
It's gonna be at Bodat, what time? About noon? Eleven to one? Okay, eleven to one. Eleven to one on Tuesday, September the twenty-eighth.
Thank you.
You spoke, but go ahead, Mr..
I, I, I can't understand you, Mr.
I can't understand you, Mr. Grant. I mean, it's all new, it's all new right now.
You received a letter explaining the request. Good evening, by the way, my name is Ron Gay, I'm a resident of Pontiac for thirty-eight years. We're asking to locate a historical plaque within Bodat Park honoring Hubert Price Junior, whom that dam at Dawson Mill Pond is named for. However, there is not actually a historical marker there at this, at this time, so the Water Resource Commission is responsible for creating this, the ones who offered to create this plaque and install it. So that's what we're asking for the commission's and the mayor's approval of this, so we can go ahead and install that on the twenty-eighth of September.
Mr. Chair, Ron Gay has contacted us, that is something that we will work with them to make sure that gets installed, all right? Mr. Gay, if you would speak to our DPW department, who is responsible for the installations, we'll make those arrangements, all right?
Well, I think we are in the loop with them at this point. I think we're waiting for your approval before we go forward with that.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. I will wait for a letter of approval, and everyone will be notified of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Clark, we adjourn at seven eleven.